Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. We're going to start on page eight. Mr. Ed Blades should like to talk about the pension benefit information, death audit services.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. This is a competitively bid three-year contract with two one-year renewals with Pension Benefits Information LLC to provide the employee retirement system with a written report of death matches related to our approximate 10,000-member system. The contract may not exceed $7,000, $75,000 for the full term. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any members have any questions for Mr. Blades? Thank you, sir. Moving on to page one. Bill two dash twenty. Mr. Patoka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill two dash twenty requires a recipient of county funds to install an assistive listening system during the construction and renovation of an assembly area if that area uses or requires the use of a public address system and a county contract has been executed to enable the construction or renovation. And this bill, as you may recall, we discussed at the last legislative session and deferred it. And we've been working with the administration on just a few amendments that make it more workable for Baltimore County. The amendments are a mix of technical and substantive changes. One of the amendments eliminates the reference to the makeup of the Commission on Disabilities, and it asks that the county executive have the makeup of the Commission on Disabilities be reflective of the needs of different members of the community. Second, it amends the bill to clarify as to when it kicks in. So the type of renovation that's being done, if it's a minor renovation, then it would not require an assistive listening device. However, if it's a major renovation that requires a permit to be pulled, then it would kick in. And then another amendment relates to the review being done by the Department of Planning or PAI rather than the Commission for Disabilities because the Commission for Disabilities doesn't meet frequently enough to address these issues. And so Department of Planning and PAI would have that responsibility, and they'll consult with the experts on hearing aid technology and produce a report to the council. Finally, the last amendment changes the effective date to forty-five days after the enactment.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Patoka? Councilwoman Patoka, I want to thank you personally for bringing this bill forward. I know two twin children that are age five who were born deaf, and they both have cochlear implants, and they would not be able to hear in some of these places in government. So I'm very grateful along with, I'm sure, so many other people who are hearing impaired, whether it's hearing aid or deaf. We probably should have done something like this a long time ago. So thank you for sponsoring this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, next we'll go to page three. Bill three dash twenty. Who wants to start by talking about donation bins? You want to, Mr. Crandall?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it was probably what, one or two years ago, Councilman Quirk, that we did our first bill regarding donation bins, and these bins are, I'm sorry, three years ago. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Donation bins are these things that are on commercial property, they're on volunteer fire company property, they're on church property, these clothing donation bins. And they become, in certain areas, they become quite a nuisance. They are a magnet for illegal dumping of all kinds of items, not only clothes, but I've seen baby strollers, coffee tables.
Mattresses.
Mattresses. And so they are this magnet. So this was kind of, this bill was an all-hands-on-deck sort of endeavor that started a few months ago where I believe Councilman Patoka, if I recall correctly, Councilwoman Bevins and I met with PAI and code enforcement. To PAI's credit, they did the work to really dig into this issue and find ways that we could better regulate these clothing bins, especially the ones that are not the best asset to our communities. So through that initial meeting, our secretary and deputy secretary worked with PAI and I believe with other county attorneys to draft, which is a pretty meaty piece of legislation that would give code enforcement the teeth to enforce compliance and also to regulate where these clothing bins could actually be located throughout Baltimore County because up until now they have been unregulated. So I'll leave it to my colleagues to add more to that, to this story. But I'm proud of the legislation. I appreciate all of the work from the administration and our own staff that has gone into it. We have also received some correspondence about how the bill might be approved, so we're taking a look at various amendments. And I want to appreciate everybody's work, and I think all seven of us are on the bill.
I think we are. I would like to add on to Councilman Crandall's comments representing the sixth district. I have several of these donation bins, more than several, actually I have four within one mile of my house. Four. And so that's why I thought it was important to have the thousand feet. No one needs four donation bins within less than a mile. I believe that these donation bins are important as a nonprofit and any which way they give back. But it has been my, not just understanding, but my experience that when people dump in front of these bins, it's not the collection bins owner's problem, right? It's people just dumping in front of these bins, and it now becomes the property owner of the little strip center or whatever property, and so they then have to clean it up. And if they don't, then Baltimore County Code Enforcement comes after the property owner. And the property owner's like, it happened in the middle of the night, I, you know, I were not responsible. Then they have to use their dumpster space to then, and then they fill their space up, and they don't have adequate room for their trash. I had one specific one in my district that was one of those little strip center, and it was constantly dumped in the middle of the night. Finally, the property owner showed up here at Baltimore County and said, I do not want this box on my property any longer. And it still took three to four months for this organization to get that box off the property, and nobody should have to go through that. And in those three or four months, the people were still dumping there. So we can't have these collection bins as a nuisance in our community. We want them to be something positive for the community, a place for people to take, slightly use things that other people can use. We want it to have a positive impact on our communities, not negative. So as long as we're receiving negative impacts in our communities, I think that we, as a council, have to come up with something that is more helpful to folks whose property is actually sitting on. And I believe Councilwoman Catch, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I appreciate the sponsor of the bill and all the work you've done on this. When the first bill passed three years ago, I did get a call from a constituent, same situation. The constituent had property. The group that put the bin in front of the business didn't even ask. It was just put in front of it. And even with the bill that we passed three years ago, it took seven months for that bin to be removed. And so hopefully this bill will make things a little easier so that we can get those bins that are eyesores out of sight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Patoka?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just say, we have a beautiful county. All seven districts make up our county. I think it's a beautiful county, and it's beautiful because of our urban, suburban, and rural character. Our streetscapes make up that character. They lead into the more suburban areas and then into the rural areas. We have chambers of commerce that work hard to keep those commercial areas beautiful. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative urban suburban character. We have developers that produce some phenomenal creations in our commercial areas. And it's really unfortunate that we worked so hard to create this beautiful county, to
have strong commercial areas that look beautiful, that have this creative, urban, suburban, rural mix, and it's a fabric that weaves into one another. And I feel like these, the people that own these bins have really tried to destroy, I know that some are good causes, but it comes at the cost of destroying the beauty of our county, and the beauty of our commercial areas, and the beauty of our streetscapes. And like I said, we work hard, not only just with our chambers, but also with state highways so that our state roads where we have commercial strips are beautiful. And I think this bill is a step in the right direction of trying to reverse the destruction of some of our more beautiful commercial areas, and I look forward to supporting it with all my six colleagues.
I would also like to add that I had received several complaints from folks that said they would call the number on the front to put in a complaint about things that have been dumped outside the bin, and they would never get a call back. So that's an issue in itself. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, there's been substantial thought that has gone into the bill, and there's some constitutional issues. I know that when we started this process, some of us, including me, had the mindset of just get rid of all of them. Have them operate the way that disabled veterans do it, or Purple Heart, where you want to donate something, they come to your door, they come to your porch or whatever to come and pick up your donation. So I'd like to ask Mr. Bostwick to talk on the subject of the constitutionality of the legislation and what research was, what you uncovered in the process of developing the legislation.
Certainly, Mr. Crandall. As you may glean from the note that accompanies this bill, we intentionally inserted the fruits of some of the research we did and some of the case law that deals with these donation bins or collection bins. And it is a free speech issue. So an outright ban would be a violation, or I'm sure the operators would allege is a violation of their free speech rights. And we, and that was an issue back three years ago when you enacted forty-three, Bill forty-three seventeen, which was kind of your first foray into regulating these. And if you recall then, you had a lot of feedback that was saying you weren't going far enough because, if you recall, we kind of kept it very simple and streamlined, and we did not really get into a lot of regulation. And I think in that period, you've heard from your constituents, as you've been indicating, that more was needed. So we reviewed what, we reviewed and spoke to the folks that you all met with from PAI. We then researched the issue, as I said, and looked at the case law that interprets this issue, this free speech issue, and nonprofits and for-profit bins. And we, with your guidance, attempted to craft a bill that does not violate those free speech issues, but attempts to utilize a regulatory scheme that fairly keeps track of them, makes sure that they are tidy and in a workable area of a location on a property so that safety is taken into consideration, aesthetics to some degree, and not being right on top of residential neighborhoods, as well as making sure that they are not dumping grounds, and that there are mechanisms in place to deal with the ones that are, and to hold the owners of those properties and the operators of the bins, which usually are not the same people, but if they are, both, to make sure that they do comply with the maintenance requirements so it doesn't become an eyesore, and that they also comply with making sure that they are appropriately collected and that the right things are being left there. Because, you know, it can't just be code enforcement going after these things because, as you know, we don't have enough people. But they have to take it upon themselves, the bin operators, to maintain them and make sure that they're being, the stuff that is being donated is appropriate and being properly collected in a routine manner. So having said all that, and I apologize for my length, we put all that together and put together the bill before you with suggestions from the members and your stakeholders before this was even introduced. And I think based on what we've heard from you since, you know, there will be amendments forthcoming to address some issues. But by and large, we have put something together that we believe is not a, passes constitutional muster. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next, we move on to page seven, Bill four dash twenty.
You have several speakers, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you for reminding me, yes. We have four speakers signed up to speak on three dash twenty. First, we have Frank Fowler. Frank, could you come up and come to the testimony table here? And then after Frank Fowler will be Mike, I want to say Freebie, Freeby? Okay. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to speak on behalf of Planet Aid, a local nonprofit regarding donation bins. Due to the timeframe, I'd like to get right to it. Planet Aid is a fully behind ordinances and permits for communities and municipalities. We've worked with a number of communities and municipalities throughout the Maryland, DC, Virginia area. We've been collecting used clothing in Baltimore County since 2004. Currently at this time, we collect over 1.4 million pounds, over 700 tons of used clothing out of Baltimore County. These used clothing, in addition to the amount of trash that we collect, over 100 tons of trash also, which we are, we also collect, which otherwise Baltimore County would be collecting, either in your landfills or in your local recycling effort. Planet Aid works really hard to get as much recycling as we can out of our landfills. And, you know, we've worked diligently with our site hosts for, to keep the areas around the bin clean. We're not perfect, but we strive to be. We are a local company. If, we have 1-800 numbers on all our bins, we have our email address. Individuals can call us at any time if there's anything ever left outside of a bin. When we sign up a site host, we not only make an agreement with them to empty the bin, but keep the area around the bin clean also. Most of the time, we respond within 24 hours, if not immediately. We have drivers in Baltimore County every day, and we're open seven days a week. So we want to work with Baltimore County, hopefully, that we can review the ordinance and make some amendments that will make it more helpful to the community. You know, one of the other issues that, you know, as far as the ordinance is the one bin, some areas are collection areas. We have a lot of relationships with property management companies, Chemco, Simon, really large properties, where communities become, donated become habitual, so they know that they're at their shopping centers or their local 7-Elevens or grocery stores. So one bin in an area with only increased dumping in those items, one person can fill up a bin. So we hope that certain amendments can be made. As far as bin sizes, I gave you some information, some white pages from Planet Aid showing you that a bin, most industry standards, a bin is seven by four feet. I mean, I'm 6'2", so these are not very large bins. So when you place only one bin in an area, you're only asking for more problems possibly in the future.
Can you finish your sentence?
So just, you know, just take that into consideration, just placing one bin does not solve your problem as far as dumping and overflow and things like that. The more space that people have to donate, I mean, some bins we go to every day. Some shopping centers, we have six bins, five bins, four bins, we go to every day. All other bins have barcodes that allow us to track the data. We know exactly how many pounds we collect from each bin. That's how we determine the frequency of pickups from those bins. Again, dumping is dumping. We don't like dumping, we don't ask for dumping, but all we can do is respond to it in a timely manner. But we hope you would take, I hope you would take some of these things into your decision.
Well, I certainly appreciate you coming in, and, but I'm going to have to disagree with you respectfully about the timing of picking up when things are dumped. You can look on any Facebook page of any community, especially one, particular one, actually Mr. Crandall's district, where for days and days and days and days, nobody would come and clean this up. And we actually have community people that have taken their own pickup trucks and went and cleaned these messes up and taken them to the dump themselves. So I think that Planet Aid could do a better job at responding, you're saying, within 24 hours. We actually know that to not be true all the time. I'm sure you do a great job in many areas, but all it takes is that one or two in the neighborhood that is the problem, and that's all people see.
Sure.
You know, so I would just like to bring that to your attention. Yes, Mr. Marks?
Yeah, I want to echo Councilwoman Bevins's comments. We both represent the Ridgefield community, and it took me several weeks to get a bin removed. But I do want to thank your company, you've ended up removing it. We don't have bulk trash collection in this county anymore, so often the bins are magnets for bulk items. And they're often located in communities where we already have a lot of code enforcement issues. So I want to thank your firm and working with us as this has been forward, and any additional assistance you can provide each one of us.
Councilman Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fowler, thank you so much for coming in. I did have a question. I was just curious, what was your business model? How does this work? What do you do with the clothes when you collect them? Where do they end up? I'm just curious, how does, what is your business model?
My business model is, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The clothing is donated, the clothing is returned to our warehouse, which is also locally. It is then bailed up, and it's then is sold on the open market and shipped overseas. Used clothing is a commodity. The funds that we recover from these facilities, these clothes, we use to fund our programs with.
What are your programs?
We have things from child hunger to teachers, mostly in Sub-Saharan Africa and Central America, farming programs, health programs, runs a gamut of health programs to help the less fortunate in the world.
If I was correct, you said you sell the clothes and then they are shipped overseas?
To the buyers. Correct.
Okay.
Who do you sell them to?
Who do you sell them to?
Different people from around the country. Most of the used clothing in this country is shipped overseas. Only about eighteen, if you take all of the clothing collections that's done in the entire country, only maybe eighteen to 20% is actually kept in the country. The additional 80% is shipped overseas somewhere, and that's United, that's United States-wide.
And then sold to the third poor countries? The poor countries?
No, that's sold to brokers on the open market. There's actually open market brokers who purchase it.
So now I'm curious, so who are the brokers on the open market that purchase used clothing? And what do they do with it?
They have customers overseas who receive the used clothing, and they take it from there. We're just the forders. Again, the funding that we receive is how we fund our programs around the world.
How many employees does Planet Fitness have? I mean, Planet Fitness, how many employees do you have?
Locally, we have 57 employees locally, but we also have 13 operations on the, 13 warehouses throughout the United States.
When you say locally, is that Baltimore County or is this Delmar or Earth?
We're in Elkridge, we're actually out of Elkridge, Maryland.
Okay.
You know, that's another thing, I mean, used clothing is jobs. I mean, there are real jobs here that we support also. We buy all our merchandise locally, we rent all our vehicles locally. You know, it's interesting that the chair asked this question about the used clothing. It is an industry, it is a business. If you can imagine, we have over 80 routes in this area that we need fuel for, we rent vehicles for, we need vehicles for. There's salaries for employees who collect those. So it is a business, and it has to be supported. I mean, that's part of the funding that we receive also continues the business also.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Catch?
Yes, thank you. Can you tell me, so there's 57 people employed in this region?
In Elkridge, yes.
In Elkridge?
That's where our warehouse is.
In where your warehouse is?
Our corporate office also.
Corporate office, okay. And how many employees are in executive positions?
Myself, I'm the operations manager, there's also a president and CEO who's also, we have two corporate offices, one is here and one is in Milford, Massachusetts.
And so you basically, the commodity of used clothes, selling it funds your operation?
Correct.
And do you do any, do you get charitable contributions?
Mostly from just the donations that we receive through our donation bins.
Now, what programs did you say you have overseas?
We partner with the USDA, the federal government. I mean, there's child hunger programs, there's child teaching programs, there are healthcare programs, there are farmer programs to, once again, to help the less fortunate. There's reading programs, there's learning programs, there's school, once again, there's a gamut of programs. Once again, these are the, these are individual programs that Planet Aid supports.
And they're not in the U.S.?
No, not all of them, no. The majority is overseas, correct.
Now, can you tell me what the budget last year was for your organization?
That I cannot answer for the entire organization, no, I do not, I wouldn't know that.
I mean, for the Elkridge operation.
Far as dollars?
Yes.
That I, trying to think, I do not have the information with me offhand, but I know we've, we've did, this location, we've collected over, you know, 10 million pounds of clothing, so that I would not be privy to that information. I wouldn't have that offhand.
Well, you have to have, you have to file a report every year.
I consider this, even though this is the corporate headquarters, this is a separate collection unit. Elkridge is Maryland's collection unit, so I don't have that information as far as Planet Aid, that's a whole.
So what you're saying is that nationally, they, there's one document sent into the federal government regarding the money raised and how it's spent, et cetera, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, we're 501(c)(3), so yes, we do have a relationship.
There's one report then that goes in?
That I'm not sure of, sir. I assume there is, but I'm not sure.
If you had to guess, what percent of the budget goes to salaries as opposed to funding the programs you're talking about?
I wouldn't want to guess, but at Planet Aid, there's not a lot of salaries. I mean, there's, again, I'm the operation manager, and there's the president and CEO, so there's not a lot of that here, it's just employees working.
Usually when nonprofits come to me, I always ask, and I won't ask you about what their salaries are, I always do. And, but I won't ask you. But, yeah, for some nonprofits, it's nonprofit for who? You know, it, it, it.
Sure.
I mean, if you look at the United Way, remember the scandal seven years ago with tremendous salary being paid to the CEO? So I won't ask you.
I do know if you look online, there's a, I believe our books are online.
Are what?
Our books are online, that you can go online and see what those questions that you have, they are. I believe in my, even my salaries on there, so it's not something that's hidden or secret or anything like that.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Like, can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Again, I'd like to mention, you know, Councilman Catch, I'm sorry if I put your name. Again, it is a, it is a business, it's a tough business. Again, we're open seven days a week. We have over 190 bins throughout the county. Again, are we perfect? No. But we do respond, and sometimes we get calls for removals for bins, and they're not the property owner, they're not the manager of the bin, they're just someone across the street who didn't like the bin. So we have to confirm who is the person who's calling. So we do send people out who investigate to find out, are you the right person who's calling for the bin removed, to be removed? And then we do remove them. Again, dumping is dumping, and we work very, very hard, seven days a week, over 100 tons of trash that we collected alone from ourselves to get it out of Baltimore County. So we do take the job seriously. Again, are we perfect? Can there be things to help us? Communication is a big thing. That's one thing we learned, that even though we have our phone numbers on our bins and our email, somehow phone calls come back to council, and then we direct them to give us a call. You know, we have an answering machine, that's where, there's a live person that answers from nine to five. We have an email address, there's answering service after that. We would like to work with the community and bring this thing, bring this type of knowledge to them, that they don't have to just feel hopeless. If there's a bin that's an issue, we remove probably twenty bins a week per request, so it's not an impossibility. If someone wants a bin removed, there is a process. There's a thirty-day written notice from the property owner, and bin is removed, or we've, I've gotten calls from council members before, and bins have been removed, so it's not like these are bins that are impossible, that there's no other alternative but to remove the bin. We would definitely like to work, again, with the council and with the community on these issues.
I just have one further question. What is the incentive to business owners to have one of your bins?
Um, well, out of the graces of their heart, I mean, most people.
They don't pay? They don't, they don't receive anything from Planet A for having it on their property?
Some do, very few. Once again, we deal with property management companies, Chemco, Simo, Echo Property, some of the larger property management companies.
So the ones that you do, can you tell me what that is equivalent to?
It's not a lot.
Well, what's not a lot? A hundred, five hundred?
Hundred dollars a month, something like that.
A hundred hours a month?
Mm-hmm.
None more than that?
Some, you would take a Chemco that has six bins, so that would be six hundred dollars a month.
So you're paying a shopping center owner six, up to six hundred hours a month for six bins to be on their property?
Correct. For the particular shopping center that I'm talking about now, we collect over fifty-two thousand pounds of clothes from that location. Again, it's cost-effective, instead of us having to drive around to collect that, we have one major site that we can collect those, that larger amount of clothing from.
Yes, okay. Councilman Jones?
Mr. Fowler, you know, again, I thank you for coming, and you mentioned that your information is online. Now, I was sort of taken back, because I was just thinking about these bins and these shopping centers. According to your two thousand fourteen, I mean seventeen annual report, it says your total operating expenses is forty million dollars. That's serious. Forty million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. I'm guessing that's all over the world?
Sure. Again, I am not the one who, to be honest with you, who would be able to answer those questions, that would be more on a corporate level. I mean, Planet A is a worldwide company, but clothes collections, no, nowhere near forty million dollars. We receive a lot of the funding from the, once again, from other sources, not just clothing collecting.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Mr. Fowler, I do want to thank you for coming in. One suggestion that I have is that before you leave, if you haven't done so already when you signed up to speak, give us your contact information.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
And I also, I know that Planet A is not the only operator of clothing donation bins, so I don't think that your organization is a hundred percent of the problem, but there is a problem.
Sure.
So I just have some specific questions for you. You mentioned that the unusable items that are dumped around your bins, when your drivers go out, do they, they pick that stuff up too?
Correct.
Okay, so where does, where does that go? What do you do with it?
It's a good question. Everything that we recycle, everything that we pick up from everything, even if it's trash and unusable, comes back to our warehouse, that we separate recyclables, whether it be plastic, metals, or even, you know, unused household items that can be reused. So we physically go through every single pin, every single piece. We try to leave the least, the smallest amount of footprint, when the bulk of that trash is then transferred to a transfer station, we go through every single piece for recyclable materials.
Okay, the materials that are not recyclable, where do they go?
They go to the county landfill.
They go to the county landfill?
Yes.
Okay. And you, you've mentioned twice that you have, is it a hundred million tons of trash?
Yes.
Okay, over what time period?
One year.
Hundred, hundred million tons of trash in one year, one year period? That went to the Baltimore County landfill?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I wanted that number.
Take your time, I'd rather you be accurate than make something up.
Hundred and twelve tons.
Hundred and twelve tons, okay. Does the organization have scale receipts for those numbers?
We do, not, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, not just the landfill, we also have regular trash collection from.
One of the?
One of the local recycling companies, trash companies also.
Okay.
And we do have receipts for those.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, not of that, we consider that hundred and twelve tons trash, but again, that does not include the recyclables that we do pull out of that also. Believe it or not, people donate a lot of good things, even though our bins clearly mark says clothing and shoes, we get the gambit from the car strollers and all the other things.
Okay. Well, I would just say to echo one of my colleague's sentiments is that, at least in my district, it appears to me that we have organizations and community members that are, for whatever reason, these things are, they're magnets for illegal dumping. And I have, you know, people doing this for free, it seems to me a lot more often than what your people are doing, I just got to be honest with you. So hopefully we can, we can change that, we can better regulate the industry using this legislation, but we, I appreciate your sentiment that you're not perfect and that maybe you guys could be doing a lot better job.
Just, just so we're clear also, every bin has a barcode that tracks it. We track every week, we go less than once a week. Again, that barcode lets us know how many pounds a week that bin's collecting. We can alter that, we go to some bins, again, every day, twice a week, three times a week, some bins don't do very well, we go every other week. Again, we also depend on the public to give us input. If there's a bin that has excessive dumping, then we'll go to it three times a week, we'll go to it five times a week, whatever it may be. So it's not something that we're just going to ignore and say we want to have dumping in high source out in the community. We have over a hundred and ninety bins just in Baltimore County alone. So if we receive a call from yourself or your constituents saying that this bin is a problem, why would we just leave it there and not try to at least solve the problem before we go to remove another bin?
Well, I guess what I'll say is in my experience and with the, I think my colleague's experience, is that that phone call, not just your organization, but other owners of these bins, those phone calls go unreturned.
That's true.
And, and we find that to be a problem, and, I mean, frankly, we all, all seven of us, drive around our districts constantly, and we, and we see it.
Sure.
And we see the same pile sitting there day after day until a community member goes and picks it up. So there really, really needs to be improvement on this whole operation.
We see bins every day, they're just boxes, cardboard boxes, plywood boxes, there's no phone numbers, there's no email address, there's no anything. We get calls from property, we get calls from people asking us to remove bins that are not even our bins, because we do answer the phone and we do respond. And we get calls from property owners who have bins dumped, we have a bin on one side and someone dumped a bin on the other side, and they want us to take care of it, and we'll go out and remove those bins when asked.
Okay, I'm done, Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you.
Councilman Catch?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Charity Watch gives your organization a failing grade. Do you have any idea what the findings were with the group that gave you this grade? I mean, are there things that you're working on so that the next time your organization is graded, that you will get an improved grade?
Again, that would be for council or communications at my corporate level. I do believe that Charity Watch rating was a while ago, I'm not sure. I think we've been rated recently by the Better Business Bureau, so there are other avenues of what we do than just Charity Watch, Charity Alert. I think recently we were just given an A grade from the Better Business Bureau, but that I'm not sure.
Better Business Bureau, so.
With the annual reports on, you went up to twenty seventeen on the website.
Okay.
So, so you knew about the failing grade then?
I recall the conversation, I've been with the company about ten years, I'm sure.
But you don't know if there's anything in your particular operation that contributed to that failing grade that you can work on to, to resolve the issue then?
I'm not aware of that. The article in depth, I believe it involved something that happened overseas, but not on a local level, no.
Yeah. Do, you have no idea then what percent of the money goes to actual programs?
No, no I don't. Again, there's information I can get to you, once again, I'll leave my business card and the information, I'll put you in touch with our communications director if you have any additional questions.
Is it a national communications director or local?
Yes, it's a national.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilman Cor.
Yeah, I know you're an employee of the company, but you're not like the CEO or the director, you're just a guy, guy on the ground trying to help out, so I totally get that. And, I mean, so this is not directed at you. I mean, Planet A, all you have to do is Google Planet A, and you'll see, this is not a unique issue with Baltimore County. These yellow bins are causing problems all around the country. And so this is definitely not unique to Baltimore County, and Planet A is definitely known for giving the least amount to what they say they're going to give the money to. That's just the facts. Maybe twenty percent, maybe thirty percent, but it's not seventy-eight percent like they claim. And so it is something, though, I think in the county, that we, you know, the reason why this bill exists is we've tried to deal with this before, and we still have, you know, issue after issue, not just with Planet A, but with a lot of these donation bins, and they're unsightly, and so just something that we'll be, we'll be watching and working with our director, P.I., hopefully to crack down more. And then it's up to people that, you know, contribute these clothes, to really take a look at where they're contributing, and are they really getting what they think they're getting when they contribute the clothes. I'll just leave it there, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Batoka.
Mr. Fowler, can I ask you, just to bring things back, bring things back to the local level here in Baltimore County, when you place a bin at a shopping center or a strip mall, what considerations do you use of where that bin is going to be placed?
I mean, I agree, we, we agree with a lot of the things that are in the current ordinance, lighting, flat surfaces, well-lit, information that's on the bin, phone numbers, contact information, scheduling information. I agree with all of these items that are in the ordinance, so there are some very good points that are in the ordinance that we would love to work with you on and abide by. But there's just some things that are in this, this ordinance that just makes that very difficult, and it would create problems and not just solve them.
Just part, as part of your business practice, you check in with the Chamber of Commerce and say, hey, put this bin in the heart of this commercial district that, in your area, what are your thoughts with, where, where should the placement be?
Just generally worked out with the owner of the property. I mean, every, every bin placement is not a good placement, I mean, we want the bins in high-traffic, high-voltage area. Remember, the reason why donation bins are so successful is that they're convenient. Without donation bins, then people will tend not to donate, they won't, is, you know, people become habitual donators and they become regular donators. Without donation bin, all of these pounds, I mean, I'm just speaking on behalf of Planet A, we'll go into the landfills. I mean, textile is one of the number-one causes of greenhouse gases, so these are things that we take very seriously, and this is the reason why, again, that we do have donation bins, not just Planet A, but I'm sure some of the other nonprofits here. It's about getting recycling. You know, again, we work with, from West Virginia, I personally work with recycling centers throughout the Maryland, D.C., Virginia, West Virginia area, and for the most point, they want more recycling, they want to know where, how can we contribute and help work with you to get more recycling out of, out of the towns and counties and cities. You know, very rarely has it been, how can we lessen that effect? Most, we have worked with Montgomery County, some other counties that are working towards zero-waste initiatives. So, again, Southern Maryland, Eastern Shore, we work with all the recycling facilities down there, through all these communities, and we, again, we would love to try to be able to work with you, amending a few of these issues on this ordinance, I think it would have a lot of teeth to it. When the original ordinance came out three years ago, we were all behind it, we went out and got permits for all the bins, there were literally no physical permits, we went out and made our own permits to put them on the bin. So I understand your issues as far as blight and the bins, but I think that if we work together, we can make it better, instead of just lessening the effect of having donation bins out there.
So if I were a business owner and I spent lots of time considering, lots of investment, considering building materials, tree canopy, pervious, imperivious services, how it looks, how it fits into the urban design, and, you know, come to make all of these factors fit together, and then at the front of my property is this bin that doesn't look, that hasn't really had any design consideration at all, and it, you know, it doesn't really look good, and then it looks worse, and then a day later, it looks worse, then it rains, and it looks worse, until finally, all of these things that business owners are doing to make this county beautiful and make our commercial district strong, and people want to shop in someplace that feels good, there's a dump essentially with a Planet A box in front of it in our commercial districts. So I would ask, if you're going to continue this, I mean, there's lots of comments about the level of profit you're making and things that are happening at a higher level with Planet Fitness, but I would ask, and I'd ask you here today, can you commit to not putting a bin on the front of a business on the, in our commercial strips? Can I ask you to commit to not doing that?
Sir?
Yes.
Again, let me make this perfectly clear, we never dump a box on a property without the owner's permission. Every bin is signed, there's an agreement, we have an agreement that we have, and I can supply you with this agreement that is signed, that, that, that agreement is brought back to our offices, uploading our database, so if you called us about a particular bin, we can pull that bin up. We would never place a bin without permission of the property owner. This is, we, again, you know, ordinance from three years ago?
So do you work out where the placement will be with the property owner?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That is not our decision at all.
That's good to know. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, one, one last thing, I hope, from me, from Mr. Fowler, is you mentioned that your organization was supportive of the legislation that the council did three years ago.
Correct.
Then can I ask you why your organization sued Baltimore County over that legislation?
To be honest with you, when we met with you guys regarding this, there was sort of a gentleman's agreement that this, this ordinance was new, it wasn't perfect, and that it would be improved in the future. We went out and I personally paid for permits for all of these bins, I personally had my team go out and visit every site to make sure all of our agreements were current and in order. So, again, there was no permits issued at that time, I actually made up my own permits and had my team go out and tape them to all the bins, so when a code enforcement officer was out in the street, he knew that, okay, here's a copy of the permit that is legitimate. So, again, we want to work with you guys, this is not an issue where we're not, we're not in agreement with permits and ordinances. Again, there's just some small amendments that would make this perfect, in my eyes anyway.
Well, I, I'm not quite sure if you answered my question or not, and it might, as an operations manager, with all due respect, you, you might not be the appropriate person to answer the question, but it got to, we did the legislation three years ago, your organization sued Baltimore County over the legislation.
Okay.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure the basis for all of that, and I appreciate your work once the ordinance was passed, but your organization as a whole sued Baltimore County to try to regulate this industry?
Again, again, one of the issues with the ordinance in the past, well, it was very specific, when the ordinance was passed, again, we were unaware of it until after it was passed, just like this ordinance, we weren't aware of this until Friday, when a reporter called us to ask us about it. One of the bigger issues, and I'm trying to jog my memory, was that it was limited to four places where bins were allowed, shopping. was that it was limited to four places where bins were allowed: shopping centers, industrial park, fuel service stations. I believe the bill from 2017, I think I have a copy of it. It was things like that that we had an issue with, that we, you know, that would be 80% of our bins we would have to remove, just on that level of the ordinance for this bin placement only at those three locations. So, I mean, it would directly affect our business. We would end up closing up and laying off people and things like that. So, that is why I think we felt we had no option but to try to save our business, like any other business would do. And again, there were other issues with the ordinance, that once again, I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, but I know at that time, that was a big problem, in addition to, once again, one bin per location. I mean, these are things that just were hinder our industry and our collection efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is it Mike Freeby? Fairby, thank you. And then next will be Robin Belsky.
Good afternoon, Council. I appreciate you having the time for me to sit here with you today. Just want to give you a little background on Turnkey Enterprises. We are a for-profit company that works with nonprofit organizations in the communities that we serve. We look for partnerships in communities to help support a local nonprofit, raise funding to support their missions. Turnkey's been in business since 2016. We employ, our main office is in New Jersey. We've expanded into Maryland a few years ago. When we first moved here, we always check with any municipality if a permit is required. We partner with the nonprofit who owns the property in most cases, and we make sure that we have property owner consent. We make sure that our locations meet whatever ordinance that may be out there. And we want to make sure that, yes, there is recycling that's necessary for used clothing. We want to be a partner with the community to have that happen. We have chosen a model that kind of looks aesthetically pleasing in a community. We have made a conscious business decision to not enter storefronts, places like that. We feel that partnering with a local nonprofit would serve the community better. Our nonprofits use the funding for whatever missions they may serve. So, a couple of the issues that Turnkey sees from the bill, and I'm hoping we can agree on some amendments, the size of the structure. We, as you guys may know through some of my dialogue, ours are eight-foot by 10-foot by nine-foot tall. We have chosen this size. We actually started with an eight by 16. We realized that's too big. We also recognize that some locations have more foot traffic and need that space for the donations, so it doesn't happen on the outside. So, long story short, we're looking for a little bit of modification on that. We do have a lot of organizations, nonprofits, that are in residential zones. Having a 250-foot from any boundary will limit them from having this opportunity. So, we are looking to partner with the local communities to support local needs. Our organizations, our sponsors, they have a key to all of our sheds. They help us maintain the cleanliness of the sheds. We're there on a weekly basis, but they have a key. If they see something as they drive by, they open up the door, they put it inside. We take what's left over. Three minutes goes by fast. So, we're just, we're willing to partner with you guys, make sure we're proponents of a bill. We are in New Jersey. We follow the New Jersey state statute. We work with municipalities, and we're looking to partner with you guys to make sure that we can continue our business in supporting our local nonprofits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Catch? Will you specifically, are there a couple groups in Baltimore County that you're assisting?
There are many organizations, such as churches, fire companies, rescue squads, and I can provide a list, obviously.
Okay, just pick two of them, and if you would tell us exactly what assistance you give and the cost to the charity.
So, there is zero cost for our program. We take care of everything from front end to back end. We do have, we don't necessarily have a contract with our organizations, but we have an agreement that says, look, we can try it on a trial basis. If you like what's going on, we'll continue with our program. So, we collect on a weekly basis. We pay the organization on a monthly basis for the previous month's collections. Our organizations, depending on the tonnage, have generated between $100 and $200 a month, and that's predicated on, you know, how well people, they go out to reach out to the community and say, hey, help us. What's a little bit unique about us is that we allow the nonprofit to go in there. As you can imagine, people are donating to this nonprofit, so that product is essentially theirs at that point. So, that organization can do what they choose with it. If there's a local need, they can go in there, use that locally. We just come and collect the overflow. There's way too many, there's too many donations for each organization to be able to take that on themselves. So, we act as their collecting site, and we pay them for what we collect.
So, you, what you collect, you give them a portion of the proceeds when you sell it?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, do you know what percent you take?
It fluctuates based on the market, but anywhere between 30 and 40%.
Okay, okay. But you're for-profit, right?
We are for-profit, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robin Belsky, and then our final speaker will be Judy Jones on this bill.
Let me know when you are ready. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Bevins, and members of the Baltimore County Council. My name is Robin Belsky, and I am the Executive Board Chair of Advocacy for HANA, and I am speaking on their behalf today regarding this bill. HANA is a nonprofit agency under the 501(c)(3) umbrella of the Associated Jewish Federation of Baltimore. HANA responds to the needs of people who experience abuse in areas of domestic violence, elder abuse, sexual trauma, and teen dating violence. We provide, we provide physical, psychological, and sexual counseling, financial and spiritual support to those who are abused in Baltimore County and Baltimore City. Currently, HANA has legally permitted donation bins in four locations, at two synagogues and two Jewish community centers, to collect unwanted clothing, shoes, linens, and other items. We have very, very close relationships with every property we place our bins. These items are sold to Turnkey Enterprises, a donation bin service entity, and 100% of the funds raised go directly to helping our clients with their day-to-day needs to help them flee from abusive situations. Donation bin fundraising is a vital part of our operations, and we plan to expand the number of bins placed to increase the funds we raise multifold. Of note, Turnkey Services picks up the bins' items on a weekly basis, and in addition to this, the bins are checked by HANA staff and volunteers on a scheduled basis. We intentionally picked Turnkey for the appearance of their bins and their customer service. If we have a heavy drive, they service our bins or clothing donation sheds on a more often basis. We are here today because we are requesting certain things be added to the bill. In Section 415(b)(1), Location of the Bins, in Section A, Line 8, you mention that churches, school, or fire station properties in all zones are allowed to have bins. We are asking that the word "church" be stricken, and houses of worship be added, so that it be an all-inclusive terminology that would, by its very nature, include churches, synagogues, and other religious institutions. Also, our bins are eight-by-10, eight-feet-by-10-feet-by-nine-feet-tall. The bins that you have are no taller than six-feet-by-six-feet and 260 cubic feet. Our sheds are larger than this because on an average, 50% to 75% of these bins are full by the end of the week for the weekly pickup. We have not done any marketing. We have not promoted our bins. We plan to do so in the future when we place more bins, and this would increase the amount of donations to probably the bins being almost 100% full. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, these bins are, they're, since, I guess, 2004 when Mr. Fowler was speaking, I guess that's when Planet Aid started, the size has not been regulated. So, I'm wondering if they're full by the end of the week, can you get out there more than once a week, if they're a smaller size?
So...
Because they don't aesthetically fit into most of our communities.
Okay. If you look at the testimony that was given to you, my copy at the end of the page, or at the back of the, this is what our bins look like.
You look more like a shed. It's like a shed.
Well, it's not a bin, it's a shed.
It's a shed.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I don't know about that. And with regard to your other, to one of your suggestions, I believe that we're already working on that. If I'm not mistaken, if I can ask our draftsman, we're... Right.
Yes, sir, we are. We've received a number of inquiries via email through the members and their constituents, including, I believe, these folks, and we are definitely working on some tweaks.
It's important to note that the sheds for us, as well as for all Turnkey clients, have the name of the organization where the donations are going to on the front face of the sheds.
Thank you. I'm complete, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And I like you can get a receipt. I have no way of getting a receipt from some of the other bins. Councilman Jones?
Yes, I was curious if you could share with us, what is your business model?
So, we are a nonprofit organization, and are you asking us about the business model of like what we earn from the sheds, or...
Right. I neglected to ask the gentleman who shared, who worked with you. I forgot to ask, I know they are for-profit, so I was under the assumption that what you don't keep for yourself, they sell the same way, but the difference is they just keep it for profit.
Okay, I will let them answer that, but what I will tell you is that we do earn eight cents a pound on anything that is picked up from our sheds. So, a bin on average annually, right now, without any marketing, brings us in $5,000 a year for each bin. Right now, we have four placed. That's about $20,000 a year, and this is a relatively new endeavor for us.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Councilman Batoka?
Yes, Ms. Belsky, thank you very much for your presentation. Let me just say to my colleagues that HANA is, this is apples and oranges compared to what we've heard from Planet Aid. HANA is part of the Associated, which is a philanthropic organization that helps communities throughout the Baltimore area. And HANA, they take on roles that are unfortunately needed in our community, like domestic violence, elder abuse. So, when Ms. Belsky talks about the dollars that HANA is raising through this, this is going back to the community in areas that unfortunately we have to deal with. And I think HANA has been an organization that built up a very strong reputation in terms of dealing with very difficult issues in our community. I want to thank you for coming, Ms. Belsky.
Thank you.
And I took the notes on what you said, and will work with my colleagues to try to address the needs.
We appreciate it greatly, and we appreciate you servicing our district.
Thank you so much.
The last thing I do want to add is that 100% of the money earned from our bins goes directly to our clients. So, if a client needs to leave any dangerous circumstance immediately, these funds are at our, literally, we don't have to go into an account, we don't have to go into anything. They're easily accessible for us to give to our clients in an emergency situation. It can be anything from transportation, leaving, housing, you name it. So, I want you to know how important this money is to us, and it's important in the future for us to be able to place many more new sheds around the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing for the community. I do have one question for you. Have you ever had an issue with dumping at your areas?
We fortunately have not. There was maybe one time, there were some bags left outside of the shed. So, we have Turnkey coming once a week, but we also have volunteers and staff that drive through the areas where our bins are to make sure there is not any overage or anything left out. We have received only one complaint, and it was literally two garbage bags left out of a shed that wasn't even full. Maybe they couldn't lift it in.
Thank you. Councilman Batoka?
Just one more question, Ms. Belsky.
Sure.
In the beginning, you said that your collection areas are located at synagogues?
Right now, currently, two synagogues.
Two synagogues.
And the two JCCs in Baltimore, the Jewish Community Centers in Baltimore.
So, the reason I bring that up, and I think it's important, is that Ms. Belsky and HANA and the operation has strong monitoring of what's going on, and I think that's key, is that, you know, that's relatively few complaints for areas, the JCCs, two synagogues. And by the way, while we're on the topic of the JCC, I want to put a plug in for the town hall meeting tonight at the Gordon Center. The agency heads will be there at 5:00, and the town hall meeting starts at 6:00, but that's at the Owings Mills JCC, where there's a collection bin. So, I'm going to take a look at it tonight, and my guess is that things will be in order. If not, I'll talk to Mike Malinoff, who'll be at the JCC as well, from PAI. But again, I want to thank you for what you do at HANA, and I think the key is monitoring, and I think that's what we haven't heard from some of the other entities that are doing this, is the monitors are community members who are angry that a virtual sign that says "dump here" has been placed on a commercial strip. So, thank you, Ms...
And we also are very cognizant. We work with the, wherever we're placing the sheds, so that they are not an eyesore. So, they pick the spot. We stay within the permitting guidelines and, you know, know that we're not just placing a bin anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Judy Jones.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Councilman. I, my name is Judy Jones. I'm Family Ministries' Coordinator at Salem United Methodist Church, which is part of Councilman Marx's district. And I feel like a very little fish in a big sea here, but I am here to support the amendment, any amendment that can be made to this bill regarding the sheds. We have not yet installed a shed, but we are hopeful that we can. I was given the name Turnkey Enterprises by another colleague of mine, another person who is a lay pastor at a church in Harford County, and they have had Turnkey Enterprise sheds at their property for some time and are extremely happy with that. I can assure you that if we are, we have a large parking lot with ample area to put a shed well back from the street. a shed well back from the, the street. We are not right next to residential area. And I can also assure you that if we are permitted to put this on our property, we will be monitoring it very well. I have a, I have a friend right with me over there, Lauren, who said, "I'll monitor, I'll be there to monitor," and we have a trustee board that'll be right there. But I just, I would like to just support, I'm here to support Turnkey Enterprises and, and Hana, and any of the nonprofits that have them on their properties, because I, I have heard nothing but good. And I am looking forward, our church is looking forward, our administrative council has talked about this. We've presented it, I presented it to them, showed them the information. I like the mission statement that Turnkey Enterprises has, and I would just like to see the amendments being made to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much for the letter that you sent, and also for your wonderful work and stewardship for the community. You know, I've visited the Helping Hands pantry, I've been there many times, and you are truly a beacon of, of light in the Northeast. So, thank you for everything you do.
Yes, we also serve homeless, in fact, next week, we are going to be hosting a large group of, of homeless at our church for a week, and we do serve a couple of homeless shelters throughout. We have our youth go serve in many areas on mission trips every year, and we do have a lot of mission work that we do, and, and the pro, and what we would make from this is just going to enhance and, and, and help us with our mission work.
And I know you are a, a hub for not just Kingsville, but Upper Falls, Franklinville, and a lot of those smaller churches in Kingsville, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, where we... Okay, next, we're going to go to page seven, Bill four dash 20, Private Security and Surveillance Camera Registration Program. Who wants to talk about that? Councilman Jones?
This bill is basically in a, in an attempt to assist the police in terms of gathering information that can lead to solving crimes. Right now, the current model is when the crime takes place, the police will survey the area, look, canvass the area looking for security cameras. Sometimes they have to come the next day, when it's daylight out, to look and see who has a camera. What this bill would do is simply, on a voluntary basis, we incentivize people to do it, but it's totally up to them, create a registry so that in the event of a crime, the police can right away look and see who has a camera in the area, contact that person, and then make arrangements to see the footage. And again, it's all up to the citizen whether they want to participate. Just because they go on the registry, they could still say, "No, I don't want to show you my footage." And that's basically the, the idea with the bill. And it, it could possibly really, really help save lives, because if you look at the timeline between something happening and they're gaining footage versus being able to go right away and know where cameras are, it can make a big difference in terms of time, especially if they have to come back the next day and look for it. So, this is totally voluntary, totally up to the citizens, but I do think it will be a very important tool to the police department.
Kathy.
Yes, Councilman Crandall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I sent an email to our secretary requesting this bill be drafted, and he said, "Well, Councilman Jones already did that." So, Councilman, thank you for, for beating me to the punch on this, but I think it's important to understand, I agree with everything you said, but I think it's important to understand that these, these cameras, because they're, they are so widespread, they are, and I don't have the data from the police department, maybe we can get that before we vote on this bill, but they, they are clearing a high number of cases because of these cameras. And if we can always remember Officer Amy Caprio, one of the things that came up in, in, in the grieving process was the story of her using these cameras and canvassing a neighborhood over a period of time in order to get someone that was robbing people of packages that were delivered to their porch. And the video surveillance closed that case, cleared the case, and, and hopefully justice was, was served. So, I think, I, I think we do have some speakers, Madam Chair.
Yes, we do.
So, and I, I think that this, there, there are, when you're talking about surveillance cameras, you, you, you head into the area of the issue of privacy. And I would just say, as someone who has cameras at their own house, that I'm, I'm surveilling my front porch, and I'm surveilling the entrance to, to my backyard, among other things. And admittedly, my motion sensor for these cameras will go off if there is a car that goes down the street in front of, in front of my house. So, I'm sensitive to the privacy, privacy issue, but I'm also more sensitive to public safety and what is going on in some of our communities. So, I'm supportive of the bill. I think it's a, it's a good measure. As Councilman Jones stated, this is purely voluntary on your part. It's, it's voluntary on what you surveil on your own property, and I think this is a force multiplier for a police department to close cases more quickly, conduct investigations more efficiently, and I, I see that, let's see, we, do we have all seven members on this one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
No, maybe not.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state a few things.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Batoka.
Just want to thank Councilman Crandall and Councilman Jones for taking a leadership role in this. You know, we've, we've got to, I think, to address crime, public safety in Baltimore County. We can't sit back and be spectators. We have to take action, and Councilman Jones and, and Councilman Crandall have chosen to take action, and the other members of the council have signed on as cosponsors so that the, the police can, that be most effective in the use of their time in trying to arrest perpetrators when, when an event has occurred. So, just want to say thanks for taking the leadership role on this, and we, we've got to be not active, passive spectators, but active participants to drive down crime. And crime just doesn't go down randomly. It needs to be driven down, and so I'm, I'm pleased that the council's taking this action.
Yes, Councilman Jones.
One, one more thing I would add. I am very confident that the citizens of Baltimore County will embrace this program and register in high numbers, because I think most of the citizens, if not all the citizens of Baltimore County, want to do their part in terms of solving crime and, and keeping our community safe. So, I look forward to the launch of the program, and I look forward to seeing everybody registering their cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else? All ready. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to, let's see, page 12, and that's Resolution 21 dash 20, Rules of Procedure. Mr. Secretary, I believe we have a few people signed up. Thank you so much. Okay, who wants, who wants to take 2120 first? Okeydoke. Oh, okay. I thought we just went to pass right by. Mr. Catch.
I won't be long. I, three years ago, I put this bill in, it failed four to three. When the SAFE Act was introduced by the county executive, I got a number of constituents contact me and, and say, "Well, we cannot attend a work session because during the day, we have a job." So, I put this bill in to change the time till six. It's now been changed back to four, hopefully to give people who have jobs the opportunity to come here and testify. So, that's, that's the purpose of the bill. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I put my two cents in. Councilman Jones.
Yeah, I, I, I look forward to working with all my colleagues to come up with a solution here. I think by moving the work session to make it real concise, we are literally reducing the opportunities that people have to testify on issues of importance to them. Every other juris, major jurisdiction in the state, including the State General Assembly, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Howard County, Anorah County, and Baltimore City, they all have the ability to testify during the day and during the evening. So, for us to move to an all-evening scenario, it will reduce the opportunity, reduce the, the flexibility and the opportunity for citizens to testify. So, although, my colleagues, I, I believe your heart is in the right place, I just think when we talk about the work session, we totally forget, we, it says, it is as if the, the council meetings don't count when people have a right to come at the end of the council meeting and testify about any legislation, any item of concern to them. The same people sit on this dais, and we hear the same testimony whether you come at 2:00 or you come at 6:00. So, the work session is not the only opportunity that people have to testify. People have been coming to legislative sessions testifying for years. People email us, people visit us, people make phone calls to us to somehow imply that the work session is the only way that people testify is, yes, simply not true. And people right now have an opportunity to come during the work, during the council meetings and testify. So, when a bill is introduced, they can come that night, they can come another night, and we're talking about making it so that they can testify before we actually vote on the bill on the third night. So, right now, there's three evenings that people can talk and one daytime. It doesn't do us any good to move it to four nights, because there are certain people that can't come during the day, and we would be eliminating their opportunities, especially senior citizens, many of whom choose not to drive at night, and some of them can't drive at night. So, that's my two cents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I agree with Councilman Jones. I didn't have a outcry for this from my constituency. I did misspeak at the last council meeting. A reporter said that I had said that no one had contacted me, well, four people did contact me, but they weren't in my district, so I should have been more clear. None of my constituents reached out to me on this issue, and since our last public meeting, I've had four or five emails, and I have them with me, of people asking me not to move it. I agree with Mr. Councilman Jones that there are some people, like today, that are here during the day. Some people come to both the work session and the council meeting if it's a hot topic. Corey, Corey, I know you do, people that are very interested in this process will come to both. When we just have contracts and kind of boring things, no one shows up. I, I think, and I, I wish we would have kept track, more people show up during the day for our work sessions than our council meetings. So, I think that's, that says a lot, too. But if you move both meetings to 6:00 in the evening, you are taking the ability of people who can only come during the day. This is 2020, not everybody works nine to five, they telecommute, they work shift work, they could just leave work and, you know, say, "I'll be back in an hour, I have something important to do." So, I, I have been against moving it to six. I think moving it to four does not solve anything, because someone that's at work is still not home at four. They're still at work. They're at work till fi, 4:30, 5:00. You know, they may be leaving at, at 5:00 at best and getting here at 5:30, quarter to six. So, with knowing that all the other jurisdictions have a time to testify during the day and one in the evening, this process has worked for four years, and I'm not so sure why we would be changing it. So, I'll just leave it at that. But we have had a lot of conversation between all seven of us on this, on this topic for sure, and we've all reached out to our constituency. And I guess some folks in some districts must feel stronger about it than other folks, because there are three of us up here on the dais that have not had any kind of communication about their constituency wanting them to change the hours of the work session.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I, example was given of the Maryland General Assembly. You have to realize that the Maryland General Assembly meets 90 days, and we consider it about 2,500 bills. We would start at 10:00 in the morning and sometimes go to 2:00, 3:00 o'clock at night. So, you really can't compare the state legislature starting times with the council, because we have much fewer bills. And as an example, what has gone on here today with the bin bill and other bills where there's been this back and forth, back and forth with the witnesses and questions, I think that's been very valuable. During the evening, during the council voting sessions, basically what happens is people get up and they make a three-minute speech, and that's it. I mean, there's not this round exchanging ideas and talking about amendments, that kind of thing. It's, the work session is different than coming at night and test, you know, saying you're for this, you're against that, because you don't have this back and forth as you do in the work session. So, that's why I think it's important to have the work session a time where you can get as many people that want to, who want to come and testify the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
I also believe that we have, we've had several discussions about having, when, when there's a bill that's introduced, the night of the introduction is when people can come out and, and talk with us and have this same exchange that we just had this afternoon. And also, we've had a discussion about perhaps, instead of people testifying after we have voted, which really makes no sense, because we've already had our vote, that they be given an opportunity before the vote to testify. Sometimes testimony changes someone's name, changes their mind, gives them a different perspective of the bill. So, we've talked about that as a body as well, and I think that trying something like that first, and also vamping up our county council page and all of us on social media, letting folks know you can come out and testify when there's an introduction, you can come out during the work session, and then you can come again before we vote on the council meeting. That gives three opportunities for folks to come out, both daytime and nighttime. And, you know, we receive emails, we're televised now, people can watch us, and then send emails, phone calls, and whatnot. So, I, you know, again, I still think there's other opportunities for us to look at before making such a drastic change of something that's been effect for 40 years. And no one's talked about the expense of it yet. I don't think we got any feedback on what the expense of having another nighttime meeting with the guards downstairs, lights on, people comp time, who have to testify. I don't think we got anything back on that yet. So, I'm not sure what the cost would be associated with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could, I, number one, I'm, I'm just going to respectfully disagree with my colleague. Yes, we do have back and forth sometimes in the evenings, sometimes perhaps not as robust, but some of our work sessions are not a lot of back and forth. But I also wanted to just talk about the General Assembly for one second. I mean, the reason they have it for 90 days is because historically, that's what they did, because most of them were farmers and they had to tend to the farms. But not many of them are farmers today, yet they still have it at 90 days, because I would suspect maybe their tradition, maybe their history, maybe their culture has something to do with that. I, I don't know why, but every legislature in this, in the country does not have 90 days, yet they still choose to do it.
And that's the state, too. We're, we're just one jurisdiction within the state.
I, I can give you history. First of all, the legislature one time met every other year, and for 60 days, then it went to 60 days, then it went to 90 days. So, the legislature changed as needed, which is what I think we need to do.
Well, we've changed as well. I think we got a history lesson that at one time, there was only one council meeting a month, no work sessions. Then the workload became heavier, we had two council meetings a month, still no work session, then the work, one work session, and there was... Then the work, one work session, and there was no testimony. You would just sit there and listen, I guess, to the members during the work session. There was no interaction, there was no testimony. So we have also changed over the years as well. So, yes, Councilman.
Yeah, I want to thank my colleagues for some very thoughtful and robust ideas. And while we may share different viewpoints on this, I don't think anyone can challenge our commitment to open government. When Councilman Quirk and Councilwoman Bevins and I were elected, Facebook was very much in its infancy. I mean, we were transitioning from faxes over to digital media. And now, I think we've come very, very far. And televising, the work sessions has certainly helped. I mean, we've made a lot of leaps. There is no perfect time to have a work session. I did ask the auditor to try to find some statistics and they were able to learn that according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which tracks employment data across the United States, at 2:00, 67% of Americans 15 years and older were working. By 4:00, that number dropped by 15% and then dropped by another 16% to 5:00. If we were to move the council meetings to 6:00, only 20% of Americans would be working. I think the 4:00 is a compromise, but I do think it does increase the number of people who could participate. But I do respect and recognize that there are good and thoughtful people on both sides of this issue.
Yes.
I guess make a note that everybody don't work. We have a lot of seniors that don't drive during the evening and I guess they wouldn't show up in the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
I think this was, and the Auditor's office can confirm this, I think this was all those who are working.
Right.
Right.
Senior stuff.
That's correct, but these are, these are all the Americans 15 years and older who had a job.
Well, we can share that we were mindful to count. Many people were at the council meeting and there were five. When you took the reporters, the lawyers, and the staff out of the audience, there were five. And I'm counting 10 here today, excluding staff, lawyers, and, yes, there's a reporter. So there's actually more here during the day than there is at a nighttime council meeting, unless it's a hot topic, a really hot topic. And then people come out no matter what, day or night, they will be here. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you for counting, Will Noble. But I do want to say, seriously, that we had a good deliberation on this at the last council meeting. And as I said then, I believe that 4:00 is not a great time. I think 6:00 is a good time for both the work session and also for the council meeting. I feel like, you know, we exclude professions like teachers. We have families where both parents are working and so they don't have a chance to participate in this process directly. Social media is a tool, but it's a tool that doesn't reach everyone. I know if I look at my own household and using social media, I would say Facebook. I have no idea what my 18-year-old son uses for social media, but just using Facebook as an example, you have three registered voters in the House and only one that would be, would have some, you would touch that person through Facebook, through that social media. So it's just a tool in the toolbox. I do want to thank my colleagues for kind of looking at this in a very comprehensive way. I think each of us has looked at a variety of alternatives. We've been passionate about how we've addressed this. So I just feel like I'm going to say, and I don't think it's going to surprise anyone here, that for me and for what I hear in the Second District, I don't travel the rest of the county as much, especially in terms of community meetings. So I can't say for Districts 1 or 3 through 7, but for the Second District, the majority of people I interact with say, "Hey, 6:00 works great, thanks for being part of that legislation." And so I'm going to, I did vote at a 4:00 time for a work session as a, to compromise with my colleagues, but being honest with myself, I think 6:00 is the best time for both work session and for council meeting, legislative session. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Quirk.
Yeah, just very briefly, I think, thinking about this, which has clearly consumed a lot of our time and discussion and sometimes passionate, I think about like future county councils. And philosophically, I think it's actually a good idea for us to continue to attract people to run for county council that have outside jobs. You know, whether it's part-time or whether it's full-time, I think that brings a more perspective, which I never think can hurt. And so to attract people that have jobs outside the county council, it could be very difficult if somebody doesn't have a flexible schedule. Fortunately, have a little more flexible schedule. But somebody maybe that's a little less flexible could be really hard on a Tuesday to take basically half the day or most of the day off to be at the work session. So I don't think this is just about, you know, constituents, which I think is important, but I also think this is about convenience, too, candidly, to the council members as well. And for me, if the work session was pushed off to 4:00, it truly means I could have a little more time in my other job as well as I'm trying to balance both those things, which, by the way, I think it's healthy for democracy. I think the more that we all become just elected officials, sometimes I don't know if that's always the best outcome. And so I think that, respectfully said. And I also think economic realities is it's not like we're all rolling money on the county council salaries either, we're not. And so I think for a lot of us, you having a part-time or another job outside of it is important. I mean, I think it gives you perspective. So for me, I think 4:00 PM is a good compromise. I'm not in favor of the 6:00 PM and 6:00 PM because I do have a family outside the county council that I'd like to see occasionally. And so to me, this is just a nice compromise, trying to kind of meld all the groups together. And I mean, honestly, if it was 2:00 and I live with it, yes. But for future county councils, I think it'd be a little harder than it would be for me.
Thank you. Councilman.
And I'll echo, I'll echo Councilman Quirk. I mean, for me, I can, you know, take some time off from my teaching to get here. And when you, when you have to do the budget here and you have budget work, you have to take a lot of time, a lot of personal leave. But I agree with what Councilman Quirk said. I do think there is value in allowing for that sort of flexibility for those who do want to serve on the county council. So thank you.
Thank you. We have four speakers signed up to speak on 21-20. First is Corey Johns, and next will be Ruth Getz.
How you doing? I've gone back and forth a lot on this and I have, one, I want to say I really appreciate you guys delaying the vote on this and giving more time for people to think about it. Ultimately, I've decided I like the 2:00 PM work session and I like the 6:00 PM legislative session. Or you could come to a switch the work session to a 6:00. I like the daytime, nighttime. And what brought me to this is, and I think I'm shocking some people here who, because I was originally all for the 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM. But as you mentioned, I'm here a lot. I'm here during daytime and nighttime. But that's because I have a weird work schedule where I happen to be off Monday through Wednesday. So I can be here. But I also think that when I say I have a weird work schedule, I actually don't. I think a not 9:00 to 5:00 work schedule is normal now and that has to be considered. So I think the compromise of allowing the three-minute testimony after the work sessions during the day and the testimony before the vote at the legislative sessions is a great one because it provides equal opportunity for people of different backgrounds and work schedules and, you know, lifestyles, whatever it might be, to have access to county government. When you just limited and mentioned, you know, for future councils, but also how about future constituents? I think the 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, where everybody works that, I think that's a thing of the past. I serve on the, volunteer on the County Board of Breckenparks and I constantly have conversations with coaches about how they just have to simply adapt to the new society of, they're like, "Why can't we get volunteers to coach for these after-school games?" I'm like, "Well, I'm 30, I can't, I work evenings, I work, you know, weekends. I don't have that ability." And it's, they have to adapt. And I think as a council, you also have to consider that. Yeah, maybe, you know, over the past couple of years and previously, yeah, 6:00 PM probably would have made more sense. But as society is continually, you know, moving away from a 9:00 to 5:00 schedule, it has to be considered moving forward because it's not what's staying around anymore. My brother can never make 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, he works at night. My mom can never make 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, she works, you know. I happen to be able to, but again, like I said, I have a weird schedule that benefits it, but a lot of people have different schedules that don't. So I just ultimately came to the, you know, my stance on it is there should be some sort of adjustment to provide equal opportunity after the work session as well because I really came to this conclusion after I heard the testimonies and both sides after hearing that. So yes, there are two legislative sessions that people could speak at at night, but that's without hearing the open discussion about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Corey. And just for the record, I just wanted to mention that when my colleagues were talking about how important it was that more people could come at night because they work, I offered that maybe we, the suggestion that I made was to switch it, was to make the council meeting during the day and have the work session at night. That made a lot of sense to me, but I didn't get anybody on board with that. But, oh, I had Wade, Wade was on board with me, yeah. Because that makes sense. If you're truly trying to get people to a work session and you're saying they can't come because they work during the day, well, let's just swap the meetings. But those voted down. So thanks for coming in, Corey, appreciate it. Next is Ruth Getz. And then next will be Scott Pappas. Good evening, I was going to say, good evening, good afternoon.
I know, usually I'm here at night. First, I'm going to speak as Representative of the Baltimore County Republican Party. Last night, we had our meeting and we voted to support the resolution to move the Baltimore County work sessions to 4:00 to allow greater access for citizens and taxpayers into their local legislative process. We urge the members of the Baltimore County Council to unanimously pass this resolution. The current time prevents the majority of citizens who work during the day to attend and therefore alienates them from their own government. Moving the work sessions to 4:00 PM would allow many more people to make their voices heard. So that's from the Baltimore County Republican Party. Now, I'd like to speak as Ruth Getz, as a citizen of Baltimore County. As you know, I usually attend the nighttime sessions because afternoon is very difficult for me. And it's really not because of work, it's because of personal life. But, and also, I don't know where other people parked, but I parked on the street where you have two-hour parking. So as you saw, I had to leave to move my car because there's only two-hour parking. And also, it costs me more money to park because I have to pay for parking. When I come in the evening, I pay for 15 minutes of parking because after 6:00 PM, you don't have to pay for parking anymore. So here, now it's costing me four, I think like $4 or $5 for me to attend this meeting. So if I want to attend meetings twice a month or have, often you have work sessions, it adds into my budget. It is an expense along with these meetings. This one today only started at 2:25, didn't even start at 2:00. And it's very long, much longer than legislative sessions.
Well, if we were here at my time, we could be getting home at 10:00.
Well, I come to a lot of the meetings, they're like 45 minutes long. I'm home by 7:00, 7:30, I'm here, you know, you know I come here a lot. So, you know, whatever, I just wanted to state that. And also, I find, you stated that there are alternate ways of contacting you, but I find that it's most effective for me individually. I feel I can talk to all seven of you at the same time and you have to suffer listening to me. If I email, it either, I don't know who reads my emails when I make phone calls. I speak to the aides, whatever. So I just feel this is, I have a better relationship with you by attending your meetings. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman.
Ms. Getz, I certainly appreciate you coming and I know you find your way here a lot and we certainly welcome that. And you did bring up a good point, one that I'm going to urge out my colleagues. Maybe we can look at something to do with parking to make it a little more convenient because that is an issue and I'm glad you brought it up. But I'm just curious, when you were at the Republican Party and they were debating this issue, being the person that comes here often at night, was it a part of the discussion that you tell them that they can, "Oh, by the way, you know you can come there anytime you want after the legislative sessions"? Was that part of the discussion?
It really wasn't discussed, but when I go to our central committee meetings, I give a report from what I see here and I let them know. So they do know that I testify whenever I do and I encourage other committee members to come here and represent their districts as well and to come and testify. So they do know from previous times, even though it wasn't mentioned last night.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Getz. Do you, when you were at the Baltimore County Republican Party meeting last night, did you mention to them that the evening meetings are also supported by Baltimore County Progressive Democrats?
I don't think so.
Well, I think it's a great day because this is the one issue.
Councilman, that terminology is not used in those meetings.
This is the one issue, Scott, where the Baltimore County Republican Party and the Baltimore County Progressive Dems agree upon. And so I think we're making progress right here in Baltimore County that we can't make in the nation. So we should all feel very proud of ourselves. We're making progress, we're the model.
I did, I didn't mention it in your terminology, but I did mention that it is one of the rare times that I've seen a Democrat sponsoring a proposal, working with the Republicans in the majority. So I did mention it in that.
So hopefully, this, this, this meeting will go viral and we can set an example for the rest of the nation right here in Baltimore County.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Getz, I'm going to disagree with you about that we're always partisan. The bill that we talked about with the clothing bin donation, that was, the lead on that was Councilman Potoka, Councilwoman Bevins, and myself. And I jumped on immediately once I found out that Councilman Jones was working on the video surveillance voluntary registry. That was Councilman Jones and I. So I don't, there are things that fall under, there are things that do fall under political ideological lines, but I think that this council has shown that we can work together across the aisle. So I would disagree with you. Now, something that you brought up, you know what? Everything that you said in your testimony, you were right. Everything that Corey said, Corey left.
Yeah, he did.
Everything that Corey said, he was right as well, which is why we're wrestling with this issue and trying to find a solution and some common ground on it, which is why we deferred the vote because there are strong feelings both ways. And as I've said, I said when we first were deliberating this bill last legislative session, that one person's convenience is another person's burden. So you make it easier for one person, that makes it more difficult for another, which is why we're just, we're hoping that a bolt of lightning hits one of us and we come, we come up with, we come up with an appropriate solution that works for most. It probably won't work for all, but works for most, so.
I personally, as far as, I think it's a good idea to have sessions during the day and in the evening. Just like you said, it's just because it's inconvenient for some people. It's convenient for others, you can never make everybody happy. So as far as me personally changing it from 2:00 to 4:00 or 6:00, 4:00 is difficult, too, but whatever you do, you decide. four o'clock is difficult too, but whatever you do, you decide. That's really not a big issue for me as far as the times, but I know the afternoon sessions are much harder for me to get to, but I don't think you're making decisions based on me coming here at two o'clock versus six o'clock, because I do come to the six o'clock meetings. So that's not as important of an issue for me. So that's why I'm a little separate from the Republican Party as far as putting it in the afternoon. As far as bipartisan sponsorship of bills, I do see that there is, but having the Democrat majority on voting on the bills, I just don't see Democrats coming to the Republican side as, because we're in the minority. I just don't see that. It might happen sometimes, but I just don't see it very often. That's all.
I'll give you a good, Ruth, thank you. You know, I love that you come here and I really respect you. I'll give you a good example of where the council of the previous term came together unanimously at considerable risk to the Democrats was on the stormwater management fee. Kathy Bevins was, Kathy Bevins was the chair, and we joined together to seek to repeal that, to come up with an alternative, and that was a really tough vote for none of the Democrats. So it does happen, and there's an example where the Democrats, I think, gravitated toward what would traditionally be, I think, more of a Republican position.
Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad it does happen, and it's good to see it when it happens.
Yep, thank you for coming in. Next, we have Scott Pappas. And then the last speaker will be, I believe it's Mark Code.
I'd like to wish everybody a good afternoon and recognize the Madam Chairman and, of course, our esteemed Baltimore County Council members. I'd also like to preface with the fact I want to thank you all for giving the public additional time to deliberate this issue, because I do believe this issue strikes to the core of what this nation is about, which is freedom of speech and our system to make available every opportunity to advance that ability. So with that, let me read this brief statement, if you will. Dear, dear council members, as you know, the overwhelming majority of Baltimore County taxpayers have been frustrated for years demanding policy reforms, reforms that ensure governmental transparency and accountability, and reforms in the Baltimore County legislation decision-making forums, the Baltimore County Council work session and the county voting session. Before us is the reforming of the Baltimore County work session. For too long, the Baltimore County Council has unreasonably burdened and expected taxpayers must lose time at work that disrupts their employer's business by having to leave their jobs early to testify at the work session held at two PM. For the first time in Baltimore County history, civic-minded county residents discounted and disenfranchised from testifying due to the current work session time have an opportunity to write this miscarriage of democracy by simply tweaking the work session clock to the same time as the county council voting session is held, six PM. Considering most county work business hours, including Mr. David Marks, including Mr. Quirk, including Ms. Bevins, district office hours are from eight-thirty to four PM also, and considering that community and business associations' meetings are at six PM and sometimes at seven PM, and I didn't go into the long, laundry list of PTAs and rec councils and all the other things that traditionally meet early in the evening, not late in the afternoon. I'd also like to limelight the fact that our county executive, that every single one of the seven twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen county executive budget town halls is being held at venues located at each of the seven county districts, including Mr. Crandall and Ms. Bevins and, of course, Mr. Jones. Districts are all scheduled at six to eight PM, not four PM. Repeat that, six to eight, not four on. And for why? Because if the meetings were held at two PM, or in this case, we're trying to ameliorate at four PM, no one would show up because they're still at work. The ideals, the ideals of, and I quote, "dedicated to serving the needs of our community," Mr. Potoka, "and represents the interests of my constituents in the southwest Baltimore County," Mr. Quirk, "and work to reform and strengthen neighborhoods and schools," Mr. Marks, "and determined to bring about change that positively impacts our community," Mr. Jones, "and of course, proud to usher in a new era of citizen involvement," Mr. Crandall. All on your county councilman webpages raises the question, what more serves the needs of the community? What more represents the interest of the constituents? What more strengthens neighborhoods and schools? What more brings about change that positively impacts our community? And what more can usher in citizen involvement than removing any constraints, including time, shackling, public participation, and free speech in the Baltimore County Council's legislative process? And later this moment, Baltimore County Council's legislative, legislative history ushering in, again, a new era of citizen involvement by freeing Baltimore County residents of a long-worn work session time shackle, the below signatories as duly elected representatives of and by their respective Baltimore County communities endorse, authorize, and vote affirmatively the Baltimore County Council changing the work session time from the current two PM to the proposed new time of six PM. Excuse me.
I'm going to have to stop you there.
Thank you in advance for fulfilling.
Mr. Pappas, you've went three minutes over, two minutes over your time already.
Madam, if I may be so respectful as to bring to your attention that people.
Do you have another page?
No, madam, I have a closing remark. May I be permitted to speak my closing remark?
Certainly.
Thank you in advance for fulfilling your collective commitments, bringing about change positively impacting our communities, ushering a new era of citizen involvement that it serves the interests and needs of our communities. I have a list of community presidents here. This won't be submitted because there are more that I couldn't get to that will be signing it, and I'm sure you'll all be receiving it. And I'm going to see how far, okay, the Baltimore County residents wish to sign that list also. Thank you, Madam Chairman, for that extended moment.
Any members have any questions? Oh, no, we do have one more. I'm sorry. Mark Code, are you still here? There you go. Come forward, you're our last speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm for it because.
Can you speak into your mic so we can hear you? Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm for it because it's very hard to get off work, which then is an expense because you're losing money and then you got to pay the part. So it's like, do you take that chance and cut into your personal budget for your livelihood? Yes, it's important, but that can make or break a household. And like, for me, it's difficult because then that makes or break a weekly budget on an already tight budget. So I'm for it, especially for like, the younger generation who really don't see any other way but to make their money during the day and then finagle the evening how they see fit. That's my take on it. It ain't long, but.
Thank you. Mark, have you ever been to a council, a work session before?
No, because it's going in daytime and I can't get off like that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Potoka.
Mr. Fort, I was going to ask the same question as, as Ms. Bevins, but I just want to thank you for coming out here. I think it's absolutely outstanding to have someone who has not come before this council to take the time and have the courage to come out and share your thoughts with, with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out, Mark. Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Okay, everybody, I think this concludes today's work session. Everybody have a safe drive home. Well, so there's been, so there's been four groups that have been formed since Trump was elected, and that was one of them.
Oh, it's not just, is it a kind of one group?
Uh, no, but I know the indivisible of Taunus. Indivisible, so, yeah, indivisible. So it's all these groups that formed after Trump where these women, they just didn't know what to do with themselves. I belong to one called Rise Up Maryland, and they're just about, like, what do we do in a positive way, you know, that are, they're crazy inside every Trump. So they're like, write postcards for candidates, you know, they'll do positive things, they march in Washington, they just do different things. They don't do anything crazy, but, yeah, but, but these, these groups came out of, you know, Trump gets elected.